September twenty-third, would you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda with one change. We're gonna, at the end of the, end of our meeting here, we're gonna switch the closed sessions around. Pending litigation will be second, labor negotiations will be first. With that, there's no other changes.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second, motion's been made in second to approve the agenda with the change, modification at the end. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Close same sign, motion carries. Okay, from our county work session today, we had the presentation for our HMA statement of work number two. So... Board's wishes on that?
Mr. Traveling, I've also approved the statement of work agreement between Steel County and HMA regarding their creation of the new Steel County Human Services Department. I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion on the matter? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Close same sign, motion carries. That will take us to tonight's presentation for the Steel County 2024 audit report. We will have Sheena Hediger, CPA from Baker Tilly with us via the TV screen over there.
Sheen?
Can she hear us? Yep.
I can hear you, thank you. We've finished. Hold on a minute. Sorry, so the audit was finished and sent over this morning, the finalized audit. Sheen is with Baker Tilly, Baker Tilly does all of our auditing for us, including our single audit and our financial audit along with jury dispatch audit. So Sheen is here to present the audit summary and review, and she'll be able to answer any questions that you may have to be.
Okay, Sheena, you can take over.
All right, thank you. Looks like you've got the presentation there on your screen. So I will not worry about sharing mine, but... Okay, well, thank you for having me tonight, and also thank you for allowing the virtual presentation here. As introduced, I'm Sheen Hediger, I'm a principal with Baker Tilly, and I oversee the county's annual audit process. As mentioned, we did issue the reports that were dated yesterday, so got those all completed. We have been working on them. You know, we start our preliminary field work all the way back in January, come back and do the bulk of the work. This year was kind of May and July, given some of the staff turnover and readiness. So overall, though, you know, our main contacts are Candy and Madison, and just like to thank them for the responsiveness to questions, the cooperation, and everything throughout the process. So quick overview, as mentioned, issued the three reports, those three reports are the financial statements, the report on federal awards, and the reporting insights letter. So I will cover each of those briefly here throughout the presentation. All right, on the first section, the independent auditors' report, so this is the three or so pages within your financial statements that we as the auditors are preparing and giving you. The rest of the financial statement is really that of the counties. So for this, for 2024, we did again issue an unmodified opinion, so that is also known as a clean opinion, and is the highest level that the county can receive. And that ultimately means that we found the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles. And there's then a section about management's responsibility. So again, management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. We are contracted to prepare those financials, but ultimately, management takes responsibility for them. Also responsible for designing and implementing a system of internal controls over that financial reporting, and then also evaluating if there are conditions or events that would affect the county's ability to continue operation going forward. The next section then is the auditor's responsibility, so what us as the auditors are doing is obtaining a reasonable assurance that those financials are free from material misstatement. Reasonable is a high level of assurance, we are not looking at every transaction. We sample transactions based on materiality levels, our risk assessments, looking at the procedures and processes, and narrowing in on certain areas, in addition to just talking to different departments and areas of the county throughout the process. A misstatement would be considered material if it would significantly influence the judgment of the users of the financials. So while we do use a qualitative threshold in dollar amounts, but there's also, sorry, we use quantitative measures, but there's also qualitative measures that could impact that judgment. Throughout our audit process, we exercise professional judgment, maintain our professional skepticism. We do a risk assessment, and then perform our audits based on those risks, and obtain an understanding of the internal control structure that management is responsible for. Look at the county policies and estimates that are used, making sure that those are reasonable, and then finally also would conclude if there were any conditions or events to cause concern that the county could not continue. Then we will look at some financial highlights, so getting into some of the numbers of the financial statements. The first metric here is the general fund fund balance. This really is one of the most important numbers within your financial statements. I want to stress, this is general fund only, so it does not include, you know, your road and bridge or your human services, any of those other functions. But having an adequate general fund fund balance allows for, you know, adequacy of cash flows, if revenues coming in don't always match when payments need to be made, and allows you to have some flexibility in responding to budgetary needs or unexpected expenditures in the future. So the fund balance can be broken down into these five categories. They are intentionally listed in order of liquidity and restrictions, with the top being the least liquid, most restricted amounts, down to the available amounts at the bottom. Page thirty-five of the financial statements has more detail of each of these categories and what makes them up, but just from a high level, so non-spendable are those that are in a non-spendable form, so things like inventories, prepaid's, and then some of the long-term loans that are not expected to be paid or not be able to be used in the near term. And then there's about $278,000 of advances between general fund and the ditches that is funding those individual ditches that may have deposits. The restricted funds are various grants or amounts that are, that have to be maintained because of legislation or statutes. The committed balance is about $87,000 of that is for employee wellness expenses, and then $500,000 has been set aside for capital projects. The assigned balance...
Can I ask you a question, Sheen?
Yeah.
Can you elaborate a little on that employee wellness?
It is something that you as the commissioners have set aside for a future purpose. Maybe, maybe others could, would give.
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember what that, when that was or what that was.
Yeah, it was the health insurance.
Did it start at what?
Oh, yeah.
Hundred thirteen thousand.
Oh, is that health insurance? Okay, all right, so thank you. Sorry to interrupt, please.
Oh, no, please do, if there's other questions.
Thank you.
The assigned balance then is our other amounts that you've set aside for specific purposes. At the end of 2024, 3.2 million of that balance was to balance your general fund's 2025 budget, so intended use of the fund balance going forward. And then about 1.6 million is set aside for future compensated absence payouts. And then the remaining 22 million is your residual on the side, you know, available to be used for county operations. So at the end of 2024 compared to 23, the total general fund fund balance did increase $5.5 million to an ending balance of $29.7 million. The next slide then, this is just a kind of a measure of adequacy of the fund balance. So we like to take the general fund expenditures, so total expenditures for 2024 were about $36.5 million, and comparing to those assigned and unassigned fund balance amounts, so that really puts available and flexible to be spent. And within that available fund balance, you have about, almost seventy-five percent of the total year's expenditures in fund reserve that equates to about nine months. So if you're gonna get no monies in the door in 2025, you can essentially operate for about nine months. The graph there shows a three-year trend, with the blue line being Steel County's percentages, the green line being OSA recommends a minimum of five months on hand, so again, I said Steel County is about nine, OSA recommends five, the GFOA, the General Governmental Finance Officers Association, says about two months. That's a pretty fair minimum. So while you have, you do have a question there, you know, about the OSA's recommended minimum, just a couple things to note, these are minimum recommendations, so you really don't want to be falling below that. In addition, like I said on the last slide, you have about $3.2 million of fund balance planned to be used in 2025, so you would be looking to already spend down some of those reserves. All right, the next slide then, we'll get what led to that $5.5 million increase for the year, so looking at income statement numbers. The balance, or the budget for 2024, so you planned to break even with about $36 million of revenue and $36 million of expenditures. Actuals, so revenues ended up being about $6.3 million over budget. Much of that is, well, $3 million of it was investment income being over budget. And then the county entered into various different leases and subscription technology arrangements. Teams are treated like what used to be capital leases, so that full amount goes on as both a revenue and an expense for the year. So that was about $1.1 million of overage on both the revenue and the expense side. So, and then on the expenditures, you were actually almost right on budget. So that led to the, that change in fund balance of about $5.5 million, pretty similar to 2023's actual results too, and I believe that one also was largely because of investment performance. So that, that's always a hard number to budget for, and always great when it comes in better than planned. But, so I, I'm not, not concerned that you had, you know, an overage in your planned fund balance. There, there also, I forgot to mention, so at the start of the financial statements, there is a management's discussion and analysis, ten, twelve pages or so of kind of a recap of what happened in the year. So if you get a chance to read that, that's a good summary of the activities, and we'll also touch on some of these financial highlights that we're going over. Okay, the next section then is looking at the cash and investments of the whole county. This is moving past just general funds, this is for the whole county. You see the restricted cash balances did increase about $1.7 million year-over-year from 23 to 24. You know, just remember, this, this is a point in time, so this is on 12/31/24, those were the balances. You know, most of that increase is probably due to the, again, was investment income balances being positive. The restricted cash and investments balance, that's your monies that are set aside for the solid waste fund for future remediation liabilities. And then the fiduciary funds are monies that the county holds on behalf of others, so those are not funds that are available to be spent on any county operations. Then, as I mentioned, the company does have a few other fund types outside of the general fund. So looking at road and bridge, the fund balance there did increase from 23 to 24. That was largely just delay of construction projects, timing of when things happened. The ditch funds had special assessments received, monies coming in that exceeded what the expenditures were for ditch projects. The opioid settlement fund, so that's those payments from the opioid litigation, those payments that will be coming over, it's like an eighteen-year period. So just that fund balance will likely continue to increase each year as you get those funds, unless you start spending those down. And then the homelessness and housing fund, which was new in 2023, had some state funds received in 2024, leading to that increase. Then there's the debt service fund, that one, you know, comes close to breaking even. You levy slightly more than what the expected debt service payments are based on state statute. And then the capital projects fund, while it looks like it didn't have a lot of activity because the fund balance didn't change much, that is where you had about $5.5 million of the ARPA funds spent in 2024. So the revenues and the expenditures almost equal there, as you recognize that grant funding, and then paid for the ECCA building and the sheriff building addition. Right, and then there's the solid waste fund, so this is your enterprise fund. Just looking at a couple metrics here, the cash and investments for that fund. This one does have a statement of cash flows, so that's page nine of the financial statements. Again, if you want to see more details of all the ins and outs of the cash there. But that fund did have about $664,000 of positive cash flows from operations, and then offset by about $540,000 of acquired capital assets. So a slight increase in the cash year-over-year, but good to see that the operations are bringing in enough cash to cover any big capital costs. The working capital, so your current assets exceed your current liabilities by 4.8 million. It's a strong measure to see. And then the net position for that fund did see about a $33,000 increase year-over-year. Not a lot in changes, just to point out that restricted for landfill of $229,000 is those investments, those monies that are set aside for landfill, future liabilities, those assets do exceed the liability currently. Right, and then the last numbers metric to look at, looking at the outstanding debt for the county. So your general obligation debt at the end of 2024 is about $3.7 million. There was no new debt issued in 2024, and principal payments were made unscheduled. Comparing that to the general obligation debt capacity, so that $193 million is calculated as 3% of the county's market value of the taxable property, so that's the limit to which you can borrow. So the county is sitting at just under 2% of the debt limit used. So good to see, you know, not, not approaching the debt ceiling by any means. Then that next percentage is one that bond rating agencies like to look at, so if you were going out for rated bonds, they do not want to see your debt service, your principal and interest payments to be more than 20% of your overall operating expenses. So in, for 2024, the county is sitting at about 5.5% of your debt service makes up your total expenses. And you can see the, the trend there, the blue line, the county's been consistently below that, so those are really great results too. All right, so that, and my financial statement highlights. Then touch on the second report that we issued, which is the report on federal awards. So the county did expend about $6.4 million of federal monies in 2024. A large portion of that, mentioned for about $5.5 million, was the ARPA funds, or the program by our state and local fiscal recovery funds. So that is the program that was tested for 2024. Within that report, there are two separate opinions, the first being the report on internal control over financial reporting, so focusing more on your financial statements and the processes and controls around that. So for 2024, we did have one material weakness identified. This has been reported previously, it's kind of gone from significant deficiency to material weakness, depending on the year. And for 2024, we did have to bump it to a material weakness, given that there were some material audit entries, and we as your auditors prepare the financial statements. This is very common to see in the government setting, so I would say eighty-five percent of my clients have this reported, so... Not, definitely not alone in that. We did not find any instances of non-compliance over financial reporting. And then we also have to go through the Minnesota Legal Compliance Guide and do a number of tests and checks against that, and we did not find any legal compliance findings as well. The second opinion then within this report is the report on compliance for the federal program, looking both at controls over compliance and actual compliance. So through all of our testing of the ARPA funds, we did not find any compliance issues, and we did issue again an unmodified opinion on the compliance. So those are very good, clean results. All right, and then our final report then is the reporting and insights letter. This is our report to you as the board and to management. Gives a summary of how the audit went, the procedures that we did, our various responsibilities throughout. So just a few things to highlight, there are required communications within here, so the two-way communication, the last couple pages of the report, so that touches on the nature, scope, and timing of next year's audit. Also gives you a few prompt questions, so that if you did have any concerns or anything to bring to the auditors, feel free to reach out, and it encourages you to do that. The pages five to ten are the audit approach and results from the 2024 audit. We did have one new statement this year, GASB statement, so a founding standard for compensated absences. We did evaluate that, so the county is considered implemented, but did not have any material impacts, so nothing, nothing really changing there. The significant estimates that we noted within the financial statements relate to other post-employment benefits, liabilities, the net pension liabilities, which is related to the para funds, the landfill closure, post-closure care, and ultimately, and finally depreciation over your capital assets. If we had any difficulties, disagreements, or consultations with management or outside of our audit team, we would have to report those to you. Happy to report, we did not have any of those things noted, so, you know, worked very well with the county and did not find anything significant or unusual that we needed to consult on. And then there is a section for the corrected and uncorrected misstatements, so you can see in there the audit entries that we proposed. And then coming down the line for the next two years, these are the accounting standards that will be implemented or considered for implementation. For 2025, not really expecting much of anything for changes. For '26, as we look at that financial reporting model improvements, that could have some larger impacts, but we will certainly work with county personnel, with the finance department, and make sure that the county's well set to implement those standards. So with that, again, I just, a big thank you to the county staff. The audit is no small undertaking, we, we ask a lot of questions, we ask more questions, we require a lot of documentation to be prepared for us, so just a big thank you to Candy, Madison, and everybody else who helped out with this process. My contact information is on this last slide, and it also is in the first page of that reporting and insights letter. So again, if you ever have anything throughout the year or during the audit that you want to discuss with us, we are happy to take your call.
Okay, any questions? No?
Thanks, Sheen, if you want to hang on, the board will now formally accept your audit reports. But other than that, that really kind of wraps up our audit presentation this year, thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, if there's no questions for Sheena, I would entertain a motion to accept the 2024 audit report as presented. So move, second. It's moved in second to accept the 2024 audit report as presented. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Close same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Sheena, you came in loud and clear.
Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that will take us to public comment. Those wishing to speak, state their name and address for the record. After they are acknowledged by the board chair, each person will be limited to two minutes to make his or her remarks. Steel County is committed to respectful behavior in its work environment and in its morbid rooms. Speakers should show dignity and respect towards others. Speakers will address all comments to the board as a whole, not one individual commissioner, and will not make comments about any elected or appointed officials or staff. The board may not take action on an item presented during public comment period unless the item is already on the agenda for action. When appropriate, the board may require inquiries and items brought up during the public comment period to the county administrator for follow-up. Comments from speakers may be curtailed by the board chair if the speaker is... Comments from speakers may be curtailed by the board chair if the speaker is argumentative, disrespectful, redundant, or repetitive. There will be no name-calling or abusive language permitted. Disrespectful behavior will result in being asked to return to his or her seat or to leave the boardroom. With that, I will open it up to public comment. Anyone wishes for public comment?
Melissa Zimmerman, twenty-five, twenty-five Stony Creek Drive. Good evening commissioners. Tonight the county received an unmodified opinion of its financial statement. But that came after auditors corrected material misstatements and identified material weaknesses in internal controls, a problem that did not exist in 2023. This is a transparency concern for residents. Since the beginning of 2024, we have watched as nearly the entire engineering department left, rumors pointing to serious allegations. Residents' relationships with the board has broken down, data has been mishandled, funds were transferred under false pretenses, and multiple public data law violations under review. Residents have been excluded from committee meetings, locked out of board meetings, and our voices silenced. Public comments are censored. Since 2024, eminent domain, only used twice in Steel County's history, has become a common strong-arm tactic against landowners. From the East Side Corridor to Havana, the Eighteenth Street Roundabout, and Beaver Lake, residents have been ignored and projects mismanaged. This financial audit finding is another concern for residents when it comes to transparency and accountability. Government works for the people, transparency and accountability are necessary, anything less is unacceptable. We are documenting, taking action, and we will continue to advocate for better. The question now is, what changed in 2024 to bring us here, to erode trust with the community? To what end? Is this an oversight problem, a staffing problem, a leadership problem, or something else? Residents have documented and there are patterns. I can confidently stand here and tell you, this is a Steel County problem. We do not experience these failures in transparency and accountability to nearly the same extent with other governmental agencies. Steel County is better than this, and residents will continue until we see the accountability our community deserves. It's time for the board to acknowledge these breakdowns and make the choice to clean them up, for the sake of Steel County and the future. We hope then that trust can be rebuilt, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hello Matt Senna, twenty-five, nineteen, Stony Creek Drive, here. Just to support what Melissa's saying, you know, we've not had the best history in what we've experienced to be transparency and information and dialogue with county representatives. On the engineering side primarily, and you know, we just like a fresh start. You know, as elected commissioners, we really rely on you to help, you know, kind of facilitate that back and forth and improve communication between what's going on within the county and the residents. And we look up to you as our elected officials and really want to collaborate with you, but like what Melissa said, you know, that transparency. You know, we've had a lot of concerns and are currently working through some of those, and we're really hoping that as we kind of near the end of this year and going to 2026, that we can help. Kind of work together to arrive at a better communication model that works towards mutual respect. And just being able to kind of figure out, you know, what's going on with projects that are in people's backyards without having to file data requests and go to the state with this and that. So I would just encourage this as we kind of near the end of this year, or even just now, I mean, to move more towards a collaborative environment, thank you.
Well, that's kind of ironic compared to what I'm going to say, because I didn't know what you were going to say. So, Gail Jordensen, two forty-nine, East Main Street, Oatana. I want to thank you gentlemen for listening to me. Since it's in the paper, it must be true that there's going to be no roundabout on the Main Street project by my house and lopping off part of my yard. I really thank you for listening to me and whatever you were doing behind the scenes in committees. It means a lot to me and my family, I have had in my side of the family, negative experience with eminent domain. But on my ex-husband on my daughter's paternal side, in the sixteen-fifties, there was a very opinionated woman who owned property, a great woman of faith. And she was hung as a witch because of her opinions and they took the property. And my girls and my granddaughter know the story. So my granddaughter, when she heard I was coming to all these meetings, she's like, are they going to take our property, Gamma? Are you going to get home? And I'm like, well, if I get home, I get home, you know, but I thank you, because that also helped heal part of my family history and I appreciate it very much. Oh, by the way, sometime I'll tell you about the three-foot semi-venomous lizard that crawled out from underneath my garage, a story for another time. Semi-venomous.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Going three times? Public comment closed. There's no correspondence, correct? That will take us to the consent agenda. Board's wishes?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve consent as presented.
So here's the second?
Second.
Motion by Abby, second by Prokpec, to approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries. We'll take us down to the general agenda. Page one oh one of your packet. Adopt resolution, twenty twenty-five, four three eight, setting preliminary tax levy and budget for twenty twenty-six.
Good evening commissioners and chairman. We're here to set the preliminary levy, which means we'll set it at a certain level and we cannot go over that limit for the twenty-six budget season. The proposed twenty twenty-six preliminary property tax levy is thirty-one million, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. Equating to a five point one percent increase over the twenty twenty-five, over the twenty twenty-five budget. This is the maximum model, when the final levy is approved in December of twenty twenty-five for twenty twenty-six. The twenty twenty-six proposed preliminary budget and tax levy includes the annual increases relating to wage and tax adjustments. Along with twelve point nine five percent health insurance premium increase. The budget also includes major capital projects being inflated in twenty twenty-six. Per the Steel County Board retreat on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, more discussions will be had in the subsequent months to ensure that the levy is set to the most appropriate level when it's finalized in December. However, the amount cannot exceed the proposed preliminary levy that we are requesting approved tonight. So under current property taxes, the proposed prelim budget is thirty-one million, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. That's the five point one percent increase over the twenty twenty-five budget. In addition to that, wages and overtime is going up five point eight percent. That equates to nineteen million, five hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars versus the budget of eighteen million, four seventy-three, seven hundred and seventy-five in twenty twenty-five. In total, after taxes, health insurance, and other related payroll expenses, there's a seven point six percent increase. Going to twenty-seven million, nine hundred and three thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars for twenty twenty-six versus twenty-five million, nine hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars for twenty twenty-five. In total, our expenditures in twenty twenty-five budget was sixty-six million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. And the budget is currently increasing to eighty-three million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. And that includes other revenue resources also, which are intergovernmental charges for services, other tax assessments, our investment income, license fees and contributions. And then miscellaneous and other financing sources. In total, the expenses are expected to increase twenty-five point three percent year-over-year. So I would ask that the board approve setting the tax levy to the thirty-one million, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars for twenty twenty-six.
Board's wishes?
Mr. Chair, I'll move the approval of the property tax levy of thirty-one million, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. Equating to a five percent, five point one percent increase over twenty twenty-five.
It's a resolution. No, resolution. I'll second the resolution. Okay. Motion's been made, seconded on the resolution. To increase preliminary property tax levy to thirty-one million, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. Equating to a five point one percent increase, making the total, preliminary total budget eighty-three million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. Any discussion?
I would just like to add, I'd like to thank Candy and her team for going through it, and all of our department heads for working with us to keep it down to a reasonable number.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to piggyback on that comment, we've had a couple of budgets, actually three budget sessions thus far. With department heads, and our last one was the board, but a lot of work has gone into getting this number down to five point one percent. I don't know if there's a lot of meat left on the bone, but this is our preliminary number and we'll, we'll work to see if we can whittle away at that a little bit more. Get a little more, some tax relief for our citizens of Steel County. And we at our AMC conference, we were talking with other commissioners from other counties, and we're hearing numbers out there of thirteen, fifteen percent, twenty percent. So I feel that we're in a good spot, you know, personnel costs will go up year-over-year, of course, that's the biggest driver of our budget, but. Everyone has worked hard, they deserve credit here for the work that they've done to get that number down, so. We'll see where we end up, but this is a good start, really good start.
Any other comments? If not, I will call this question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries. Thank you Candy. We'll take us to number fifteen, approve CUP number four four three, Bowser Dog Kennel.
So this is for dog daycare business, for up to a maximum of fifteen dogs. This could be a mixture of overnight and daycare dogs, up to fifteen dogs at one time, and overnight dogs would be limited to eight dogs. The planning commissioner recommends approving CUP four four three with seven conditions.
Okay. Any other questions? Board's wishes?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve CUP number four four three with seven conditions based on findings of fact.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve CUP number four four three with seven conditions based on the findings of fact. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us to number sixteen, approve the purchase of a mastic machine from Simline Incorporated.
Good evening commissioners. Here to talk to you a little bit today about the purchase of the mastic machine. Maybe I'll do two things, first is, what is a mastic machine, and then what does it do? So, it's a pull-behind trailer machine that has a hot kettle with an agitator in it. And what's added to that is a, is a hot mix asphalt and aggregate. And what that does is, that allows us to go out and perform some vital pavement management by seal cracking and sealing joints and odd holes along the way. So that's one of the primary thing that Paul, maintenance supervisor, has been doing, is looking at the pavement management aspect of this to prolong the life of the roads. So over the summer, they've actually kind of tested three different units, and one for Midstates, one for Seal Master, and one for Simline. And I believe if you have all of those prices in your packet. Obviously, the most expensive being Midstates was a very good unit, they, they really liked that, but that was the top of the line and it was the most expensive. The Seal Master was the cheapest of the units, and unfortunately, when they had that out there, they had a lot of problems with it. The words I heard were, it was arduous, cumbersome, not user-friendly to get, to get it out there. So, Simline, which is kind of right in the middle of the other two units, had about eighty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. It seemed to work very well, was very compatible with everything that they were looking for, and maybe just under the Midstates. So, a unit like this usually is, is, Paul's being a little bit conservative, saying it's a life cycle of, a unit like this would be about twelve years. I think you're probably looking at upwards of fifteen years, especially if you look at some of the other material that are. Other tools that we have out there. So the other thing we looked at is rental, rental of these would be almost nine thousand dollars a month. We typically would use that about two months out of the year, and that would be just shy of eighteen thousand dollars. So this particular unit would taper itself in about four and a half years. So from, from a public work standpoint, really what we're looking at is from a pavement management standpoint, we're going to prolong the life of our roadways. From a motorist standpoint, we're going to provide a smoother ride, and from a financial standpoint, it makes sense about four and a half years we'll, we'll have to pay for it.
I think you'll recommend approval. Board's wishes?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion, we approve the purchase of a mastic machine from Simline Inc. in an amount of eighty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars, and I'd like to add. Thanks for the explanation, I had to, I wasn't exactly sure what a mastic machine was, so I did what everybody does, I went on to YouTube last night to figure that out. Thanks for the explanation and making a good case, you know, we're, we're going to pay for it, it's paid for itself over rent, so that's, that's good, so, thank you.
We'll hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made, second, to approve the mastic machine from Simline, from only eighty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. Any other comments?
I just will make the comment that they put it to use on the Route Highway twenty-three. And if you drive, I took Ron over it the first day he was here, and the difference between that and the old approach is night and day. And it just, it's almost like a new highway when they get done with it, so it just really does its job. I think they're talking, the expanded life of a road could be up to maybe seven years. So when you start talking that, you're talking lots of dollar savings and efficiencies, so.
Okay. With that, I will call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries, thank you. Okay, that will take us to. Approve the use of compliance funds to update property sales program to omit sales data marked private, not to exceed one thousand bucks, page one fifteen of your packet.
Good evening commissioners and Mr. Chair. Committee is recommending approval of compliance fund dollars not to exceed one thousand dollars for updating our automated process that extracts sales data from the assessor's database. This happens on a nightly basis and updates the sales, the property sales application that we are publicly facing. And we are needing to modify this process to omit sales records that are merged private in the candidate base.
Okay, board's wishes?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the use of compliance funds to complete the property sales update, not to exceed one thousand dollars.
Clear second?
Second.
Second Abby. Motion been made, seconded, approve the use of compliance funds, compliance funds to complete the property sales update, not to exceed one thousand dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries. Thank you Nick?
Thank you.
Number eighteen. Approve the invoice for emergency cleanout of CD number five to SF Enterprises LLC in the amount of nineteen thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, which is over the ten thousand dollar limit, page one twenty.
So members of the board, this came from the Land Use and Records Committee. Jennifer was not able to be here this evening, but the committee is recommending approval of this invoice. You'll see that it was an emergency cleanout with work taking place over the course of several days, which is probably why the bill got as large as it did. The layout area is referenced on the map that is attached.
Board's wishes?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve that western emergency cleanout of CD five for balance of $19,140.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the invoice for emergency cleanout of CD number five for SF Enterprises LLC in the amount of $19,140. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries. All informational items in your packet. We have public works committee minutes, September 9th, on page 125. Public safety and health committee minutes from September 16th, on page 128. Land use and records committee minutes from September 18th, on page 131. That will take us to commissioner reports. Rob, do you have any reports?
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner McGregor.
Okay, on the 10th, I attended the Steel County Health Fair. I'm at the Foundation Building at the fairgrounds. It seemed like it was really organized and was going to be pretty well-attended for the day. On the 11th, I went to the Annual Farm Bureau Meeting. That was interesting. It was very, very organized and was a good meeting. On the 15th, we had a budget meeting. On the 16th, I had public safety and inquiry joint powers board. On the 17th, I had smart bus meeting, and I would like to report that they are getting caught up on getting their buses in after about three years of being way behind schedule. They're doing really well. They're actually getting staff hired again, and they're looking at adding some service hours to the Oatana area because they finally are getting staff up to where they can get more routes going. And we had the work session before the meeting today, and I just want to personally thank Candy and wish her well on her next venture. She's done a great job for Steel County and will be missed, so thank you, Candy.
Commissioner Abby.
On the 15th, a budget meeting. Also, on the 15th, the Rice Steel 911 Joint Powers Board meeting. On the 16th, the Prairie meeting. On the 17th, we had a meeting, a joint meeting with the county, city, school, and OBU. And on the 18th, Land Use and Records Committee meeting, attended the AMC conference, and our work session today.
Okay. Anything to add, Renee?
No, other than I'll be out of the office most of the day tomorrow, head of the hosting team for the Real Estate Journal, Mike Repolton. We're bringing a number of developers to the Oatana area and showcasing what Oatana and Steel County has to offer. Commissioner McGregor will be attending.
Thank you. Commissioner Brock Peck.
On the 10th, I attended the System Design Clinic, the Alliance in Healthlessness. The 11th, I had the annual joint meeting for the workforce development, joint power board. 15th, I had the county budget meeting. Also, on the 15th, was the Steel County, or Steel and Seeker Drug Court. On the 16th, I had the public safety meeting. On the 22nd, I had the workforce development, joint power board orientation. On the 22nd, we have the Spiro meeting and then the work session today.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I attended the CCA meeting, the new CCA building, the budget meeting on that Monday, and the Land Use and Records Committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. I started, where am I here? Okay, I started on the 10th, 11th, and 12th. Me and Commissioner Abby went to the state AMC conference on those three days, and then on the 15th, I had budget, 7:30 in the morning, 911 in the afternoon. Yesterday, I had Spiro and a work session before this meeting, and that is all. That will take us to next meeting notices. Property and Maintenance Committee, Thursday, October 2nd at 8:00 a.m. in the boardroom. Internal Central Services, October 7th at 8:00 a.m. in the boardroom. Land Use and Records, Thursday, October 9th at 8:00 a.m. in the boardroom. Public Works Committee, Tuesday, October 14th, 8:00 a.m. in the public works facility. County Board Work Session, Tuesday, October 14th, 4:00 p.m. in the boardroom, and the next county board meeting will be 5:00 o'clock, October 14th, right here. I would also like to thank Candy for what she did for the county. Appreciate it very well. And that will take us to our close, first of two close sessions. We'll be going into close session for the purpose of labor negotiations, strategy for Minnesota statutes, 179A.01, Section 13D and 43. Thank you, everybody, for coming.